At this point in time, we're going to have our second musical interlude. And so I will call Frank Panzarella back to center stage to entertain us with another labor song.
All right, before I start my song, I do want to make a couple of comments on some of the things that have already been said. First of all, I'd like to say that as somebody who has worked many different jobs and of all kinds, all, all jobs deserve respect, in my opinion. There are no lousy jobs. There may be jobs that have less skill involved, but if somebody doesn't do that work, somebody's not going to get whatever it is that that work gives to our society. So we have to, I feel like we have to change our attitude towards understanding that all work deserves to be well compensated. Whether it is a manual, simple task, flipping a burger, or whatever it is, all job deserves respect and all job should be well paid. And so that's my first thing. The second thing is, we are up against a monster. Capitalism in the world is not something that does anything without a major fight and a major struggle. And people have done this for centuries, and it has cost blood and lives. And we haven't mentioned one of their biggest godzillas in the room, and that is war. Capitalism has used war to constantly pit people against each other. And it has used global markets to pit each other, people against each other. Capitalism always seeks out the worst and poorest people's conditions to thrive on to, in order to make money off of their labor. Many of our manufacturing jobs ended up overseas for this very reason, including some of mine. So I, I, this is why I decided, and Henry put me in, in the mood to do this song, raise the, the song from the depression era. This, and because this song talks about the conditions that people suffer through, but also about what happens when people end up going to war as well. And it's called Brother, Can You Spare Me A Dime?
Thank you so much, Frank. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we are, um, we're now going to have our next speaker, who is Henry Lowendorf. Henry Lowendorf chairs the Greater New Haven Peace Council and is a member of the Executive Board of the United States Peace Council. He helped coordinate efforts to pass November 2020's New Haven Ballot Referendum calling to move money from the war machine to the human needs of our community. It's my great pleasure to introduce to you Henry Lowendorf.
And what I would like to do is share my screen, if I may, and see if I don't crash.
Fingers crossed.
We'll make our fingers crossed. Okay. I'm gonna thank you, Zach, and thank you, Sariana, for inviting me to be on this. And thank Frank Panzarella for the perfect segue into what I'm going to say. My, my purpose here is to make the point that slaying Godzilla is intersectional and it's, it affects all of the causes that we are working on. So let me start by saying that the United States has an industrial policy. It's a jobs program, and that program basically is focused on killing. I will explain. That's the current one. The future one is healing, education, green infrastructure. This unfortunately is the last slide rather than the first slide, so I need to get to the first slide. It's very similar. I'm gonna begin with the federal budget. This is the proposed federal budget that President Biden has given to Congress for 2022. And what it shows is the amounts of money that are allocated to the different parts of the federal government. What you see on the left is the amount that's dedicated to what we call defense. And I call it the war machine. Seven hundred and fifty-three billion dollars is what Biden proposed. And the, the Congress has proposed adding 25 billion dollars to that. In particular, Senator Blumenthal on the Senate Armed Forces Committee and Congressman Joe Courtney supported adding 25 billion dollars to this already enormous amount. And when you compare it with everything else, for example, the energy budget that, that, uh, the energy budget that includes solar and wind and, and all of the sustainable energy, it's the, it's the, uh, these are, these are set up, except for defense is set up alphabetically. But you can see the energy budget is miniscule, absolutely miniscule. The Health and Human Services budget is 100 plus billion. It's big. That includes a very small amount for the Center for Disease Control. And that CDC is, is what is, is being used to help us through this pandemic. You look further and find that, for example, EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, has a miniscule amount protecting our water, our environment, and so forth. And, and as you go through, you see how small the amounts are compared to this enormous amount that goes, that is allocated to the military budget. And that is year after year after year, it is guaranteed. It always passes. So I'm going to go to the next slide. Well, I'm gonna try to get to the next slide. Yes, the extra 25 billion that Blumenthal and Courtney added has to, has to go through its little dance here. Okay. Just to compare what the United States spends with what other countries spend, this chart points out that the U.S. spends more than the next 11 countries combined, 778 billion dollars in this particular assessment versus 761 billion for these other 11 countries. And I want to point out that of those 11 countries, nine of them are allies of the United States. And many of the countries that aren't on here are also allies. So the amount of money that the U.S. and its allies spend on military, war, and so forth, is far greater than any of its adversaries combined, or potential adversaries combined. So this is a huge amount of money that gets spent around the world, but particularly by the United States. One of the, one of the things that is startling and recently came out from the National Priorities Project is that over the last 20 years, since 9/11, the U.S. spent 21 trillion dollars on foreign and domestic militarization. Repeat that, 21 trillion dollars. Keep that in mind. 16 trillion went to the military. 3 trillion went to veterans programs, just under a trillion to homeland security. And over 700 billion went to federal law enforcement. To compare that with something that's maybe useful, President Biden's Build Back Better Act proposes 3.5 trillion dollars to be spent over 10 years. And that act is, right as we speak, is being debated vigorously in the Congress. Because there's, the Republicans don't want to see it at all, and there are some Democrats who don't want to see it. But that 3.5 trillion dollars to be spent over 10 years is 350 billion dollars a year. And that's less than half, less than half the military budget for one year. That's what we're going to do to heal this country. Half of what we spend to destroy things, half, less than half. That's, that is, that sets up the priorities that the government has, that the Congress has, that the president has, and that, and that we have to slay. We have to slay that priority. Now, in terms of jobs, one of the, one of the wonderful studies that was done, originally out of University of Massachusetts by Heidi Garrett Peltier and others, was to show how many jobs you get for a certain amount of money. In this case, they picked 230 billion dollars per year. And you get just over 1.5 million jobs. You just get, get over, just, um, I can't believe what's happening here. But I can believe it. You get 1.5 million jobs if you spend it on defense, in quotes. But look at, that's the blue that goes across. That's the amount that you get if you look at this chart. And the orange is the additional jobs you would get if you spent the same amount of money on other things. For example, wind, solar, retrofitting buildings, clean energy. In the case of retrofits, you get over 851,000 jobs, more than you get spending it on defense. We get many more jobs, many more jobs in other sectors than we do when we spend it on war. And in the case of education, almost 3 million more jobs, almost twice as many jobs would we get in addition. So three times actually as many jobs that we would get if we were spending money on certain, on, on elementary and secondary education. And in infrastructure, over 660,000 jobs. In healthcare, nearly 2 million more jobs. What this shows overall is that by spending the money on what humans need in our society, on our communities, we get far more jobs than we get in spending it on war and killing. Another example, in, in terms of the 21 trillion dollars spent over the last 20 years. If we had invested it, or if in the future we invest 4.5 trillion dollars, we could fully decarbonize the U.S. electric grid. With 2.3 trillion, we could create 5 million jobs at 15 dollars an hour with benefits and cost of living adjustments for 10 years. We could erase student debt with 1.2 trillion. With 449 billion, just under half a trillion dollars, we could extend the child tax credit for 10 years. 200 billion dollars would guarantee free preschool for 10 years and raise teacher pay. And we'd have, we, 25 billion would be enough to provide COVID vaccines for the populations of low-income countries. This doesn't even add up to 21 trillion. It's far less. But that gives you some idea of the scope and size of what was spent in the last 20 years and what we should, what we can spend. It was spent. It will be spent, and we can spend it in the right direction. And to be more specific, in Connecticut, our towns are gasping for breath. Hartford has already gone bankrupt and had to be bailed out by the state. Families don't have food. They're losing housing. Evictions are, are, are growing right now. And it's been pointed out, so many people lack healthcare, and COVID-19 has made things worse. Our infrastructure, water and sewage, streets and sidewalks are in terrible shape. D-plus is what they get when, when they're graded. Our parks can't be maintained because the park, the, the rangers have been let go. New Haven has, uh, has a small, very small parks department now. Uh, the libraries have left, let people go because there's not enough money in the cities to keep them going. We need to fund human needs and not kill, not be killing people. And the solutions aren't to tax us more, to borrow, to lay off, or to spend pension payments. That, those aren't the solution. The solutions are to take the money from where it's been allocated, where our government makes those priorities. In fact, I like what Aziz said.
Sorry, one minute.
It's our government. So not building one F-35 nuclear bomber would provide food for over 21,000 three-person families for one year. If we didn't build a nuclear submarine and electric boat, we would have housing for 29,000 families for one year. You can see where this is going. If Connecticut's annual IRS war tax was cut by half, we could provide 35,000 infrastructure jobs for four years. So here is the Poor People's Campaign Military Cuts, the Poor People's Campaign led by Reverend William Barber. They've made this proposal. It would add up to 350 billion dollars. Well, surprise, that's, that's enough. That's enough to pay. Oh, what is this?
You're almost out of time. Just want to let you know.
Okay, I'm almost done. That's enough to pay for the Build Back Better Act. 300, 350 billion dollars would pay for Biden's and the Congress's act. And that's just for one year. We could pay for it for one year, each year and every year, for the next 10 years. All right, let me see if I can get through this. So the question is, where would you like to spend your tax money? On, on the pandemic? The military won't do it. On climate crisis? The military won't do it. On affordable housing? Not through the military, and so forth. This is, this is the choice we have to make, and we have to force our members of Congress to make that choice. And finally, I want to say something about the Money for Human Needs campaign, the money for, move the money from the war to human needs. There's a coalition at MoneyForHumanNeeds.org that is creating coalitions, local coalitions, to do local organizing, to bring up this discussion, and to pass local resolutions that say, move the money from the war to human needs. Move the money to where we need it, to our communities. Resolutions like that have passed in New Haven. Last November, a resolution like that was put on the ballot as a referendum, and it won with 83% yes vote in New Haven. 83% yes said, cut the military budget, put it toward fighting pandemics, put it toward creating a green economy and fixing the climate, put it toward human needs and jobs. And that can be done. And so this campaign is national. It's the, the biggest country, the state and biggest city in the country, New York City, has it before the, uh, its city council and a number of other cities too. So this is, this is what I have to offer, and that, this is, this is the, to use Frank's language, slaying the Godzilla means local organizing around cutting the military budget and putting the money where we want it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. I think, you know, that really makes clear the connection between the war machine and the need to create just and humane jobs that aid our communities. I'm now going to call up our next speaker, who is Manuel Camacho. Manuel Camacho is currently a junior at James Hill House High School in New Haven, Connecticut. He's the youth center of New Haven, youth president of Ice the Beef Anti-Gun Violence Organization, and a youth leader in New Haven Rising, and an activist and public speaker across the state of Connecticut. So please join me in welcoming Manuel Camacho.
Thank you so much for having me. It's an honor to be here. Hello, everyone. My name is Manuel Camacho, and I am the youth president of Ice the Beef Anti-Gun Violence Organization, a member of New Haven Rising, and a youth activist in the state of Connecticut. I am here to speak on the issue of jobs and the lack of opportunities given to the minority. As Henry mentioned, you know, many of these problems are interconnected, and thus result in many of the issues we are faced with here today, not only across our communities and our cities, but across our nation and our world. It goes without saying that if we have such a minimal level of opportunity given to us, we can expect for negative circumstances to arise as a result. We still, we will see a rise in crime and gun violence. We will see violent uprisings because individuals are more susceptible to participating in such measures if they have nothing else to do. We understand this. While they could be working full jobs and doing something productive in their community, they are rejected or not even given the chance to work. So they turn to the streets, where one who once had dreams of being a construction worker or a doctor is now living the life of a gang member. This is the sad reality we are faced with in this nation. Individuals who would have contributed greatly to our economic development are now contributing to the death and crime rates of our cities. I cannot sit here and be complacent with my community neighbors being denied such opportunities in our cities and around the nation. This is an imperative and pressing issue in our community and our nation as a whole. While I may not be a worker, as I'm simply 16 years old, I stand in each fight for equality and justice. As said in a message delivered by Winston Churchill, "Hear this, young men and women everywhere, and proclaim it far and wide. The earth is yours in the fullness thereof. Be kind, but be fierce. You are needed now more than ever before. Take up the mantle of change, for this is your time." In the same message, I quote the words of Dr. King, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent on the things that matter." So for that reason, and many others, I will not become silent, no matter the issue and no matter the circumstance. I thank you all for having me. It's an honor to be here, and God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Manuel, for that inspiring talk. We're so glad to have you here and to join us in this struggle for full employment, a guaranteed right for a job. It is now my pleasure to introduce someone who I have worked with in this struggle for a long time. And Kim Hart is a community activist and founding member and site leader of Witness to Hunger, New Haven. She is also a member of Mothers and Others for Justice, tri-chair of the Coordinated Food Access Network, and a member of the New Haven Food Policy Council. Again, it is my great pleasure to welcome Kim Hart.
Oh my God, what an act to follow. Oh my gosh, Manuel, I think this is his name. Oh, he inspired me so much. But, um, but yes, everyone, my name is Kim Hart, and I only have three minutes, and I'm gonna do this in less than two, try to anyway. Um, as I was preparing for this, my son, who, my 19-year-old son who's in college, I was on my computer, and I told him, I said, well, I have to participate. I was asked to participate in this, you know, this, this job for all seminar time whore. And I said, but I don't have any initials after my name. I said, when I gave my bio, there were initials after my name. He says, Mom, of course you do. You are a PhD. I had looked at him, and I said, PhD? What are you talking about? I dropped out in my second, in my summer, my summer year at SCSU. He says, Mom, you are a, a, he says, you are, you are a doctor of personal history, right? So I says, oh, yeah, great. Yes, I am, right? So I am just here to just speak just very briefly on, on the, the job situation, right? I think, and I don't have a screen to share, and like, you know, so I'm not the brightest of the bunch, but to me, in my simple mind, I think that the problem is livable wage-paying jobs, right? I am a single mother. My son is a freshman, and you can't stand for it. Thank you, God, for that. But I struggled, I'm still struggling today, but I struggled raising him. And I'm disabled now, but when, when I was able to work, I had to work two, three jobs daily to make ends meet, right? I think that if we could just have living, affordable, wage-paying jobs, which I can work 40, or, no, when I mean, because I'm just saying, but a grown family can work 40 hours a week and be able to meet rent, meet gas, meet lights, meet cable, meet phone, meet food, you know, and still be able to save. I remember my mother told me, she said, coming up, right? We were forced to save money. I couldn't stand it, but I did it because I had to wait. But she says, Kim, you need to have in the bank two months of your expenses, including rent, in the bank, because you never know what's gonna happen. And this day in time, I cannot do that, right? So, but, and, and I worked two jobs, three jobs throughout raising my children, and it's still, and I still had to depend on the Department of Social Services, EBT. And for those who don't know, EBT is food stamps, right? I was depending on food stamps, and then I was depending on energy assistance, and then I was depending on the, well, what we know as Obamacare phones, you know, on the Obamacare phones and stuff, because I could not afford it, working two jobs. I think that we have to push the government, and like, don't ask me how we're gonna do this. I don't know. But all I know is that we have to push the government to, to, not 15 hours an hour. This is a start, but it's not near enough. I think that, that we really need I think that, that we really need to have affordable wage-paying jobs so that a single parent, which most people in my community, most of my neighbors are single parents, right? We need to push for this. And, and, and then two, and one more thing I want to add, and I'm getting ready to stop, is that when you're on social services, I am on social services. And my son, before he went to live on campus at UConn Stanford, yay, in August, he had a full-time job. And my, my SNAP benefits went from $254, that's $19, because he had a job and he was living in my house. Not so, it shouldn't be so. We need a benefit cliff for, for, for people who are on services, who want to get off. I'm not proud to be in services. It's embarrassing to say I'm a services, but I am on social services, right? So, but if I could just have a job where I can pay lights, gas, cable, phone, food, and rent, I wouldn't need to be on services. So I think that, that what is needed is a job increase. Thank you for your time, and I am going to get off. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kim. Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
For raising consciousness about the connectedness of these issues.
Right.
And, and the importance of all of us working together.
You know what, Zach, I mean, sorry, Professor Zach, but.
I'm just Zach.
Yes. Well, you know, because you know what? It is so important, because a lot of people think that, that I am comfortable being on services, right? On DSS, that, okay, I'm going to sit around and eat bonbons and watch all my children and waste my check to come in. That's the last thing I wanted to. I would like to get out and work and be self-sufficient. There's nothing like being self-sufficient. But to me, it's designed to keep me under the, one more thing. My son, over the summer, got a job at Home Depot. He, he got a 40-hour job at Home Depot in New Haven, right? So I reported to DSS, Department of Social Services, right? And you know, the first thing they did? The first thing they did was reduce my food stamps from, from $250 to $19 a month. Because you know what? Well, you have income in the house. That is so unfair. I'm going to shut up now, because that's, this is a whole nother, whole nother Zoom meeting. But anyway, yes, thank you, thank you for your time.
We'll have, we're going to have more meetings, and, and these issues absolutely need to be raised as part of that. This is an important aspect and the reason why everyone deserves the right to a living wage job. And so thank you so much again, Kim, for, for raising these issues. We really appreciate it. I'm now going to move on to our next speaker, who is Rose Ferraro. Rosanna Ferraro holds, holds an MSW from Columbia University and has worked in health policy and advocacy for the last seven years in Connecticut. Currently, Rose works with the Social Welfare Action Alliance, Connecticut, yay, and the Husky for Immigrants Coalition to achieve the right for healthcare for all. Please join me in welcoming Rose Ferraro.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to be touching back a little bit on what Holly spoke about, and the intersection of health justice and a jobs guarantee, or at least where I'm seeing the intersections as I've been learning more and more about this. I, first of all, want to say thank you for letting me speak in such fantastic company. And so a little bit, health justice is essentially more than just healthcare reform. Health justice is about all the intersecting issues that affect our health. And I'll get into that a little bit in, in just a minute. I just want to clarify what health justice is, because it's, it may not be a term you're familiar with. I see an alignment of values between a jobs guarantee and health justice, because both believe in the basic value of humanity and providing for our basic needs as a society. And when you think about universal healthcare and a jobs guarantee, both of those do require our government, and I say our government very strongly, right? Our country, our government, to step up and provide for all of us in this society. Obviously, the two concepts intersect. When you look at the social determinants of health, we find that healthcare is absolutely not the only thing that impacts your health. Social determinants of health are where you play, where you live, where you worship, where you learn, and includes employment. When somebody is employed, we find that they have better health outcomes, and that shouldn't be a surprise. There's, it supports having a job that pays a fair wage, supports physical well-being, emotional well-being, financial well-being. And when you think about health justice, all of those, a jobs guarantee essentially supports health justice in this way. And the other thing I wanted to say, I, just two more things I want to touch on, is I think that a jobs guarantee and universal healthcare are complementary. I think if we had a jobs guarantee and universal healthcare, we would be well on our way to providing for our society. We would have people who are able to get the care they need when they need it, not when it's an emergency, but preventive care. We would be able to have healthy, a healthier workforce. If you don't have health, you can't work. You can just think even as simply as like not having dental care can be a barrier to work. Your mouth is part of your face, and people look at you, and it's very basic, but people have, there is stigma attached to not having a healthy smile, for instance. There is stigma attached to not having the health that maybe others have, which is, to me, incredibly unfair, because we set up a system where we don't help people within poor health. And then we knock them down a little bit more with, by, they lose their job, then they lose, you know, then they have to rely on the government benefits. I think about this all the time. A lot about what Henry was saying is, if we shifted our investments, we could have all of these things, not just a jobs guarantee, but universal healthcare and universal pre-K and all the things that we really need as a society to thrive. Right now, a lot of people are just surviving, and that is no way to live. That is, we shouldn't want that for anybody. And I personally, and I think everybody in this room, wants to see everybody fulfill their greatest dreams, their, achieve the highest level of health that they can achieve, education, all of these things. And the other thing about a jobs guarantee that I started to think about while we were here, and this is the last point I wanted to make, is job, a jobs guarantee would probably help healthcare. There's a nursing shortage. We absolutely need more nurses, you know, community health workers who connect community to the healthcare system. We don't invest near enough in those types of supports for people. And around the world, they have found that community health workers are incredibly helpful to addressing not just health issues, but social determinants of health issues. So we could be funding these types of jobs that really help people, at the same time, helping people by having access to jobs. So I, I just really think that health justice is very well-served by a jobs guarantee, and I think a jobs guarantee is also well-served by health justice. Thank you all for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rose. So our, our, our final speaker of the evening is Senator Gary Winfield, who is serving his fifth term as a Connecticut state senator. Prior to his time in the state senate, Senator Winfield served in unprecedented three terms in the Connecticut House of Representatives, marked by the passage of the state's repeal of the death penalty, a transgender civil rights bill, education equity, and campaigns financed reform legislation. He graduated from Southern Connecticut State University in 2006 with a bachelor's of political science, a bachelor's of science degree in political science. Please join me in welcoming Senator Gary Winfield.
Thank, thank you, Zach. So first, I want to say, I'm just so happy to be here, right? I get to see Kim. Kim, you're phenomenal. You know that. I get to be here with Manuel, you know, I love you. Jonathan, everybody, it's, it's amazing to me. Look, the reason that I'm here is because this, this issue that we're talking about, this jobs for all issue that we're talking about, I think is, is more important than most people understand. You know, in 2018, I had the good fortune of supporting a candidate that I thought was a great candidate for the state of Connecticut, Eva Vermette, right? And I, I went to the convention, and I got up on the stage, and I don't do this, I don't do that. But the reason that I got up on the stage was because I believed in Eva, and I told people why I believed in Eva. And it had to do with the perspective that she had about people and employment and people and being able to live and, and afford what it is to just, you know, live. And when I got up on the stage, I looked out at the crowd. I didn't know what I was going to say. And I saw my party that doesn't talk about this issue. And when I got up there, I said, you know what? There was a point in my life where I was working, and I was working every day doing what I needed to do, and I couldn't make it. And at that point, I had the same experience a lot of people had. I had this jar with pennies, nickels, dimes, and quarters. And I found myself sitting on top of those pennies, nickels, dimes, and quarters, because I was counting to make sure I had enough money to make it. And if we're not talking about that, I don't know what we're talking about. See, we, we talk about, well, you, you have a job. I have two, three, sometimes four, unbelievably. And I'm still counting those pennies, nickels, dimes, and quarters. And we need to be having a conversation about making sure there's employment for all of those who would choose to work and making sure that that employment that they have allows for them to pay the bills that they have, to raise the children that they have, to do the things that are important. So as I'm thinking about that moment and I'm listening to this conversation, I'm, I'm agreeing so much with Aziz when he talks about the way that organizing happens. Because see, from my perspective, organizing begins person to person, it goes house to house, street to street, city to city. That's how you organize up to people like myself. Because you can talk all you want about how government is, our government, and all of this great sounding stuff, but it doesn't mean anything if you come to us with nothing. Because the reality is, it's not just a whole bunch of good people sitting there. They're not just sitting there waiting to do great things. They probably came there because they believed they wanted to do some good thing. But like a lot of us, even in the progressive movement, they don't understand the interconnections of these things. And so until we bring it to them, until we're organized enough to bring it to them, we aren't going to be able to move the policies we want to move. So I guess if I'm here to say anything is to remind people that the people that go in because they believe the environment's important, they believe criminal justice is important, healthcare, women's issue, whatever. But they don't recognize those things all the time. I, I was at the Capitol not too long ago, and I watched on. One day, my friends in the labor movement show up. And the very next day, my friends in the criminal justice movement show up. And neither had a big crowd. And I watched that, and I, I was like, you didn't talk to each other? You don't know how you touch on each other? And I'm watching that same thing happen. So I'm going to wrap up, because I know we're behind. I just want to remind us that if our politics, if our activism is not as intersectional as the lives we lead, then we're doing something wrong. And we've got to get that right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. And, and thank you also to all of our speakers. Of course, as you probably noticed, we're running a little behind schedule. And, but we did want to provide some opportunity for some Q and A, and also to allow, if people wanted to, to go into overtime, we're happy to keep it open. Of course, also, if you have to go, certainly, we understand that as, as well, of course. People agreed to be here till nine o'clock. And of course, we, we don't want to take advantage of that. That having been said, to lead us then in the, the Q and A in closing, what, what?
Before that, Frank is going to play his last song.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I watched the plot. All right, let's turn things over to Frank for a song, and then, and then we'll come back and have the Q and A.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to keep this one short. I'll just do maybe just two verses of this song. And the reason I chose this song, well, partly because Sariana mentioned Billy Bragg, and so I decided to do this song. But also because I think we really have to look at this struggle as an international struggle. This is a fight that is happening everywhere in the world, and we are linked to those people everywhere else in the world. And the thing that, one of the things that worries me is that people in our country, very often, when things get tough, fall back on nationalism and hatred of immigrants and other peoples, blaming other people who are most often the victims of our own system and of the wars and the predation, the, the, the policies that keep other countries poor. I mean, Manuel mentioned what happened at the border in Texas, and I think that's a really critical example of, because I was watching the news the other day, and what do I see on the news? But there's all these tankers, container ships out there, and they're saying, well, we can't get enough people to work at the jobs, right? At the same moment, they're reporting that there's thousands of people who want to come into this country and work, and who are hard-working people, and they can't find people to fill these jobs to get those tankers unloaded. And I'm thinking, okay, why didn't they just let those Haitians into this country? Send them to, to the ports and give them those jobs so they can unload those, those tankers with, with, you know? And these are the things that nationalism can become such a boundary and such a divider, that, that it's no accident that all these outright groups and the, and the racists and fascists who want to keep, go back to the 1950s with their Jim Crow and all the other divisive things, that, that's what it's about. They, they want to keep that privilege of the, the high-paying jobs for a small sector, and they don't want to extend those benefits to everyone. So just two quick verses of the Internationale, because this was the song that workers came up with many, many years ago in the 1870s, written by a Belgian anarchist, and later became the song of the international labor movement. And it's called the Internationale. Stand up, all victims of oppression. For the tyrants fear your might. Don't cling so hard to your possessions. You have nothing if you have no rights. Let racist ignorance be ended. Or respect makes the empires fall. Freedom is merely privilege extended unless enjoyed by one and all. So come brothers and sisters, for the struggle carries on. The Internationale unites the world in song. So comrades come round, for this is the time and place. The international ideal unites the human race. Let no one build walls to divide us, walls of hatred nor walls of stone. Come greet the dawn and stand beside us. We'll live together or we'll die alone. In a world poisoned by exploitation, those who have taken now must give and end. The vanity of. And end the vanity of nations, we've but one earth on which to live. So come brothers and sisters, for the struggle carries on. The Internationale unites the world in song. So comrades come rally, for this is the time and place. The international ideal unites the human race.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And again, I want to, I really want to thank everyone who's participated in this program this evening as we transition into what I might call overtime. And I do want to say one final thing before we do that, which is to say that, as I said at the outset, the purpose of tonight's event, as several speakers have spoken to, is to build a movement here in the state of Connecticut to fight for a federal job guarantee so that some of the things that Kim was talking about don't happen to anybody. And I think that, and some of the things that Jonathan was talking about, these, a job should be a basic human right so that all people can develop fully into what they are potentially. And this is something that is non-negotiable in my view. Now, to do this, we need to continue meeting. And we have scheduled a follow-up Zoom meeting on October 18th at 7:00 PM. We have your emails. We will communicate with you about this meeting. And if you are able to attend, we encourage you to do so, so that we can start building this struggle here in Connecticut and get some of those federal legislators on board with this direct government job creation proposal, a federal job guarantee. So with that, I want to turn things over to my collaborator in putting this thing on, who's done really the backbone of the work to put this together, and she deserves a big hand from all of you. And that's Sariana Sabarit.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize that we ran so late. Everyone was just so amazing, really. Like this went so much better than I ever anticipated and I really anticipated for it to go well. So thank you so much. And yeah, I hope that you'll stay. We want to open the floor to questions. We'll do that for like 15 to 20 minutes if you all want to. Hopefully our speakers will want to stay. So if you'd use the raise hand feature, I see that Bill has his hand up, so I'll let him go first. Go ahead, Bill. You're on mute, just so you know.
Yeah, I wanted to direct this maybe to Dr. Harvey and Dr. Goldberg. A lot of socioeconomic people are touting that in coming decades with robotization, mechanization, artificial intelligence, there's actually going to be a reduction of the need for workers. So it does raise the issue of whether or not, while we're trying to find ways to get people employed, should we be looking at a national guaranteed annual income to fill the gap? Because that could at least augment while we're going through this change.
Okay, I'll respond to that first with respect to the possible implications of robotization for the need for jobs. There are two possibilities. One is that, you know, as was true of the movement against machinery in the early 1800s, it's possible that the roboticization is not going to result in a reduction in the need for jobs, but simply accelerate the transition of our economy from one in which most jobs produce things to one in which most jobs provide services. And even to the extent that roboticization can do that, the services may end up being expanded. So I don't know. It's possible that it's a false alarm. On the other hand, if it's, you know, actually something that is going to reduce the need for jobs, I think a job guarantee program is the best means of ensuring that a transition to less work for everyone goes smoothly. The worst outcome would be that a fraction of the labor force keeps their existing jobs and everybody else joins the unemployed. A more rational way of doing it would be either to reduce everyone's work hours in order to provide jobs for everyone or supplement the jobs that are, you know, being provided by the market with a larger number of jobs addressing issues or problems or needs or desires that are currently unmet. So I don't think that it calls into question the need for a job guarantee, but would actually help us to deal with a transition if it occurred. As for a guaranteed income, I have, you know, no objections to an income guarantee, but I think that the form in which it is generally proposed by basic income guarantee advocates, a universal grant is both unfeasible and undesirable. Unfeasible because the amount of redistribution required to fund it would rob the government of resources necessary to meet other needs, and there are a lot of other needs. And undesirable because I don't think that it provides all of the benefits that are claimed for it. In particular, I don't think it's a substitute for the right to work. I'll just make one little example to illustrate my point. Two people have a job and they also get a basic income guarantee on top of the job. The one person is laid off. She now has a job guarantee, but no job. The other person still has the job guarantee and a job. In what sense is the job guarantee compensating for or replacing the job? Not at all. It does absolutely nothing since everybody gets it whether they've got a job or not. So I think that the notion that things like the need for jobs can be replaced by a job guarantee is an unsound one. On the other hand, I think the properly configured an income guarantee is absolutely important because in addition to access to a job being a human right, access to a decent income is a human right. And we need to configure that right in the same way that we need to configure the right to work so that that needs are satisfied where people, for some reason, cannot or are not expected to engage in wage labor.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you. Would anyone else like to ask a question?
Could I just say one thing? Couple of pieces on our website. One is, will a robot take your job? And another's a piece by me called, Job or Income Guarantee, Which Will Do the Better Job? So you might be interested in those.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. And you know what? I will paste that in the chat before we leave too. So if anyone wants to see it, they can find it easily. Does anyone else have another question they'd like to ask one of our speakers?
I would just like to say one thing. My earliest work was really in stopping nuclear testing in the atmosphere and very much committed to peace movement. I did move on some from it, but I think more and more, Henry, that I think that it's very, very important that we try to think of important ways in which we can merge our interests. I think peace movement has to be part of this economic and social justice movement and we have to be part of your movement. So we would, I would welcome thinking more about how we can move in that direction.
And that was such a major goal for us with this event, right? It was so that we could all get together and talk and, you know, like I said a little bit, like we get very siloed, but these things are connected. They're very clearly connected. And yeah, like it's a huge problem in this country. A, that we spend so much money on military and war machine efforts and B, that people feel like, young people feel like they have to go risk their lives in the military because it's the only somewhat secure, you know, federally guaranteed industry.
And the health issue of living with a world that is at the point of threat of nuclear war and is something I think we need to think more of. I do congratulate you on the diversity of interests around social and economic justice that you've managed to put together. That's really impressive.
Great, great. Yeah, I loved it. Thank you.
Well, you did it.
Thank you. Everybody was incredible. I'm really, I mean, yeah.
I see Frank has his hand up.
I, my question is, in some ways, this is structured as a national effort, but at the same time, what is it and how can we use the issues on a local level or within our state to, you know, advance it on a larger scale? So that would be my throw out question to whoever wants to answer it. Because I think it's a difficult struggle.
I'd like to jump in there because I don't think that a national income guarantee needs to be national. And in fact, I think it's very unlikely that, I mean, a job guarantee, I think it's very unlikely that a job guarantee will first come on the national level. I devoted some work to working out and we actually developed a bill for introduction in the City Council of New York City to establish a New York City job guarantee. I think it is feasible, that it can be afforded and that it would work. And I think that the possibility of enacting it in a progressive municipality or a progressive state is not only, you know, greater than getting it through Congress, but also is probably the route we would need to follow to get to Congress. Because it's only when the feasibility and success of an initiative like that is demonstrated that I think that the barriers to trying it at the national level would even begin to crumble. So I'm all for doing it in Connecticut if you're interested.
And a little add-on to that, could I just ask, would you be averse to calling it a living wage job guarantee?
Absolutely not.
No, there are lots, yeah, there are lots of adjectives we can add. It also needs to be sustainable work.
Right. Yeah, definitely. And that's such a big, I see the hands just, yeah, I see Mary and Logan. I just wanted to add that that's such an important part of this.
Meaningful work also.
Yeah, like meaningful work at living wages that are not like $15 that we fight for after it's relevant and eventually get when it's no longer a practical measure. It's like money that's adjusted for the cost of living constantly and in real time.
Said earlier, we'll fight for more than 15.
Right. So I don't, I don't know who had their hand up first, so I'll say Mary and then Logan. I apologize. Mary, you go first.
Yeah, thank you. Just a few comments. Just responding, I saw, I noticed Philip said something about being in a progressive state. I would say we are fortunate to have one of the progressive members of our Connecticut legislature here, but the other progressives are probably a handful. Many of them say they are, but when push comes to shove, there are very few willing to stick their neck out and risk any political capital. Gary's done that numerous times, you know? I left the Democratic Party in 2016 when Bernie Sanders got screwed over and Gary was one of the few people willing to take a stand there, as he did, well, usually with the underdog. So thank you, Gary, for all your hard work through the years. You probably remember me mostly up at criminal justice issues up at the Capitol. And I'm happy to see, you know, I'm not surprised when you said, you know, about the division in the groups and how we all need to work together. And Trudy said something similar about the peace community, working together with labor community. And my friends and family say I'm spread too thin because I'm a big picture person. So this morning I had two meetings with federal, you know, Connecticut delegation regarding the power science issue. And last week I was in a meeting, you know, with another group of legislators. So, but labor and education and training is my 30-year background. That's what I did. I worked in adult education and training and a small social service agency in New Britain that lost its funding five years ago. So we all ended up laid off, a 50-year-old nonprofit that helped find jobs for so many people and teach them English and high school diploma and all that. But all this money is being redirected to military and policing and all these other things and taken away from social services. Now that I'm retired, I have more time to spend on activism and so much so that I've even run for office three times, but, you know, on the Green Party ticket, but providing an option for people who don't want to vote Democratic or Republican. What, you know, I usually teach on Monday night. I teach online a Spanish class, but I'm adjusting my schedule for this because I would like to be part of this, being the big picture person that I am and involved with so many different groups. I like to help build bridges between different movements. So, you know, I'm able to represent one group here or one group there and try to cover more bases than some of younger people that are still in the workforce or in school. So, and hopefully you can draw from my background as far as trying to deal with welfare reform and the jobs first program. And that's so punitive, as one of the other speakers shared, I've seen so many experiences where people get a little job and they lose all their benefits. I'm also looking at the robotics thing. I've been reading a lot about that and, you know, right away I want to penalize the employers for just, you know, a bunch of greedy SOBs, I won't use my regular vocabulary, but should be penalized somehow for, you know, they always get all this job creation money and there's no accountability to find out how many jobs they did create. Well, how about if they start getting penalized for eliminating jobs? So those are just a few comments I want to make, but I will be here on the 18th and look forward to more of these discussions.
Thank you so much, Mary. Thank you. We look forward to having you. I saw Logan's hand up, so I just wanted to give him a chance to ask too.
Well, can you hear me? Sure. I want to thank you, Sariana and Zach and all the speakers on behalf of the National Jobs for All. You guys did a tremendous job. What we're trying to do is to build unity and, you know, relationships amongst the different movements. We're kind of in a big moment here. You know, the country is either going one way or the other. We are either going to continue our wars or we're not going to end those wars and change a new direction. As Trudy said at the beginning, there's 18 and a half million unemployed and underemployed people across the country, yet the news media and everything says that employers can't find workers, there's a worker shortage. And while there's a worker shortage in some industries, it's not really the case. There's not enough jobs for all the unemployed. There's literally, on Labor Day, they cut off seven and a half million people from benefits. And we're in a crisis and what we want to do in Connecticut and throughout the country is bring in the unemployed and all the movements and build a, the unity and organization relationships, they're going to change this. And we really appreciate everybody and we need to really do our outreach to get more people involved, but we're on the edge here of really making the change that we need to do. So I want to thank everybody and let's continue the struggle.
Thank you so much, Logan. I see your hand, Holly.
Yes, I actually just want to say that we
Yes, I actually just want to say that we were able to pass the resolutions that we did. Let's see, New London was first, then Wyndham, and last, but certainly not least was New Haven. We are currently doing Hamden, but I'll be honest with you guys, it is from real grassroots efforts. We literally do tabling every week. I was at at least one or two community events, sometimes three in a row on Saturdays and/or Sundays in New Haven. So you really, we really do have to get back to true grassroots movements to get this done. That was the only thing I really wanted to say is, like Senator Winfield was saying, door to door, person to person, we did that. We canvassed neighborhoods. We went door to door. We talked to people. If you sit and you table at a community event or you go places where there's a community gathering, you need to educate people on exactly what you are talking about. You need to bring it into the communities instead of just doing, you know, just doing the, the remote things, because a lot of the community that I'm working with, they don't have connectivity. They don't have the computers, the phones, the laptop. They don't have that. So you have to go to the community events. And when you go to the community events and you do tabling and you actually give the information and you educate, and people understand what you're talking about and they know the truth, instead of all the fear mongering like the insurance companies in our state do, then they understand what they're going to get behind. And it's a huge movement that you started right there. And that's what has to be done. So you have to go back to the beginning of very first grassroots movement of tabling, canvassing, and talking face to face and doing things face to face. And I really think if we do that, starting in New Haven, where most of us are the most active, it will do great things. That's my opinion. If you want to know where to start, that's my opinion.
Thank you so much, Holly. Thank you. I see Henry. Henry, your hand is up.
Thanks, Sariana. I, I think this is a very, a very useful conversation among, among the movements. And this is certainly what, what we need. I want to point out this, that, that we, we, in the Peace Council, we've been fighting for conversion, which means in, in the military industry means taking, taking, funding the jobs that we need rather than funding the jobs that we don't need. And making sure that the people who are working in those jobs, the people who are working at Pratt and Electric Boat and Sikorsky and all the subcontractors have jobs. We, we don't want people to be unemployed and we don't want people to be underemployed or underpaid. It's really important to see this issue of conversion of a, a huge industry. But it's not just the military industry that needs to be converted. We know that the oil industry and the fossil fuel industry needs to be converted because there are a lot of people in those, in those industries who have jobs. As we go away from fossil fuels, they're going to lose their jobs. And it's very broad, you know, from the mechanics to the, to the people who take oil around, to the refinery workers, et cetera, et cetera. People putting gas furnaces, all of these people, they need, they need an alternative good job. But then it's not only that industry. Holly just talked about the, the insurance companies opposing healthcare for all and, and Medicare for all. The insurance industry is, a large part of the insurance industry is completely wasted in all of these things, in this privatized, sectionalized, crazy health insurance system that we have here. They're going to lose their jobs. They shouldn't be without good jobs. And so that needs to be converted. And if you look at the, the, the industrialized food industry, that's very similar. I think if we go through, we have industries that are, are, are actually doing negative things to the whole society. And we don't want people who are, who are, they're not creating the problems, but they're going to be victims if we do not provide them with jobs. And they're going to resist what we're talking about unless we can, we can put up, as, as Humphrey Hawkins did and as Bill is talking about, others talking about, we, we can put up jobs and make sure that they have jobs. The coal industry, for example, they have to have jobs. Colorado is leading, I think, in that area. But I think that we have to look at it for all these areas over.
It's so true. And it's, it's so true. That's so much of the strategy against this legislation that would be popular with everybody is this fear mongering around exactly that, people that are going to lose their jobs. But there are answers for that, right? Yeah. So, and Holly's right. This is the work we have to do. And, and I think that answers the question, like, is this national or is this New Haven? It's both. And it's that, like, you know, think locally, act globally thing. Like, we can't, we can all get together as a national organization and say, you know, this is a federal piece of legislation, but we can't actually get it done unless we do it at the local level. Yeah. Are there any other questions that, that anyone would like to ask our speakers before we break? All right. Thank you so much for sticking with us till the end. Those of you who are still here, we're taping this. We're going to be making it available. I think it was really phenomenal and I, I think everyone will love to see it. Thank you again for being here. And again, our meeting is on the 18th at 7:00 PM. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, have a great night, everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. We'll see you on the 18th.